Okay.
Okay, we got that taken care of. That was easy. Let the call the planning board meeting to order. Take a roll call here. Interattendances, myself, acting chairman Andrew Delisio, Morris Devine, Perry Kellogg, Jean Gagné, James Nicholas, Solicitor Scott Levesque, and Town Planner Nancy Lieutenant. I think to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 18th, 2025. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Ayes. All right, moving right along. Any changes to the agenda? Well, that's good. Old business.
Minutes.
Excuse me? Oh.
Approval of minutes.
We just did that.
Oh, no, no, no. You said changes to the agenda.
No, before that, we had approval of minutes for March 18th.
I've got to change.
I missed that completely. Sorry, sir.
You seconded the motion.
I did. I seconded the motion. I thought I was seconding a note. Okay. I withdraw my second. I withdraw my second.
Who moved? Who moved to approve? Are you withdrawing your motion? Are you withdrawing your motion? Okay.
Okay, now we start over again. Now I have just one change. Under I, future agenda items and board questions. The sentence reads, Mr. Gagné proposed an agenda item be created to include cross-communication amongst the board members. That is not what we're asked for. It is, I ask for an agenda item to be created to include communications to and from the planning board. I amend, so I'd like to amend the the minutes. Oops, sorry.
Mr. Gagné, is that a motion to approve as amended?
A motion to approve is amended.
We'll need a second.
I'd like to raise an amendment as well.
We're talking about.
Okay, sorry, that's discussion.
Right, we have to move this motion now, right?
Right.
So, all in favor?
No, 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 wait a minute. You need a second first, then there's discussion.
Second.
Okay, now you can entertain discussion.
All right, now we, all in favor?
No, discussion.
Discussion is next.
Now we discuss the, this change, right?
Right, if there's any further changes, they can be brought up during the discussion.
All right. Any further changes to the minutes, correct?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any further changes to the minutes?
On top of the existing motion?
Yes. This is just discussion.
Okay, so if this is in discussion, then when we were talking about preserving the characteristics of existing neighborhoods, I'd just like to add a reference to Westley Ordinance 260-50.3, which says the development shall be in a manner that maintains the character of the community.
This was the minutes we were talking about from previous meetings.
Correct.
That, that was, so something didn't, wasn't portrayed accurately? Or you're just adding something?
Essentially adding as a footnote or a reference to what's here.
Okay, so the purpose, Mr. Chairman, if I can interject, the purpose of the minutes is to record accurately what was discussed during the meeting or summarize it. It's not to add information. So it should accurately reflect what was actually discussed?
That item was a little bit of contention in the last meeting, different people with different observations, so I was wanting to add as a note that there was actually a town code that was attached to that.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you can just add things that was supposedly yet discussed at a meeting. Now. Scott?
That's my understanding of why the minutes exist. They accurately reflect what was actually discussed.
All right, then I'll withdraw that and bring it up under new business.
Better, right? Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, you can entertain a vote.
Then a vote on John's changes to the minutes. Bowie, did you get all that? You want to have them read back to you?
Yeah, yeah, why not?
Mr. Gagné wanted to revise the minutes to include the section regarding cross-communications to and from the planning board or amongst the planning board members.
To and from the board? But bring, bring the microphone a little closer.
It was just amongst the planning board members.
Read that.
Yep.
Right, and we're replacing it with.
Can you please turn on your microphone?
And the cross-communication amongst the members, the motion was, that's get strucken, stricken, and it is communication to and from the planning board.
Yep, I got that.
Got it? Okay.
That's it. Great, we done with approval of minutes. Now we used to sail right through approval of minutes.
We need, we still need a vote, Mr. Chairman. We do not have a vote.
Couple words, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Ayes have it, again. For the break. Right. All right, I don't have to bring up changes to agenda because I think we did all that, right? All right. Old business. 2024 ATC 04, petition for road abandonment, James Street. We've been down, we had a meeting earlier with some discussion regarding the town engineers. We have an additional report, and I'll ask the petitioner to come up and give us, if they have anything else to add. Please just state your, your name and.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Steven Sartor at With Offices at 85 Beach Street. With regards to the application, the abandonment application here before you. I think I have to address a point of order. This is a continued hearing from, I think, back in your February meeting. We don't have the same board members. Some of the board members here tonight were not here at that meeting. So I defer to your counsel, because this is not a true public hearing. It is an advisory opinion. If that is appropriate to move forward without having had a, the same quorum as we had at the first meeting. Unless I am incorrectly recalling who was present at that meeting. Excuse me?
Okay, that's good. So because it's not a public hearing, it's just a recommendation. As long as the members that are currently sitting before this recommendation have read the materials and are prepared to vote this evening and listen to any additional information, we can proceed.
I've been brought up to speed on all of this stuff. I've read all the material. I even read the minutes at the last, from the last meeting, yeah.
Same.
Okay, thank you, and please don't take it as an offense. It just, just procedurally, I thought it was appropriate to address. So we do have an additional witness here tonight, our surveyor, who can speak to the history of the site as well as the confirm the new, or I would suggest put forth on the record with actual testimony that the drainage issue, which seems to be the main reason that staff has made a, has altered their original recommendation from approving this application to a denial seemingly based upon the determination that there was infrastructure underneath this area, which now our surveyor, land surveyor, will speak to and address, and I won't put words in his mouth. I'll allow him to do that. And I would request that, and I'm happy if the board would like me to go through the motions that Mr. Boyer be considered an expert in land surveying. He has quite an extensive CV and history before this board and many other boards in the state of Rhode Island.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mark Boyer from Boyer Associates. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Rhode Island. Rhode Island registration 1888, Connecticut registration 18418. Would you like me to go through enlisted credentials?
I don't think that's, that's, that's not necessary.
Thank you. I was asked to come tonight to answer any questions that you may have. So I started working for the casters on James Street in, I believe it was 2008, and most recently we did another, a location job for her in the, I believe it was October of 2024. So I've seen the area for roughly the past 17 years.
Mr. Boyer, you care about mapping as a subject of this application, right?
If the, if the mapping is the survey of the caster's property on both sides of James Street and the improvements that were recently established in the, in the right of way, yes.
The question that are in the right of way.
Can you please use a microphone?
Mr. Boyer, you mentioned there recently were some improvements in the right of way. Could you describe those?
I believe it was October of 2024, we were asked to visit the site and locate any improvements that were constructed in the James Street right of way. Because of the situation there, I limited that to a newly constructed block retaining wall, and I believe it was a vinyl stockade fence.
And to the best of your knowledge, those are directly in the James Street right of way as you have surveyed it?
The portion that I show on our plan of the retaining wall was completely in the right of way, and the portion of the fence that I show on the plan was completely in the right of way.
Do you recall the last time you went to the site to review that?
I believe it was October of 2024.
And can you give us a brief history of John Street and how you came to your determination that it connect, or James Street, and how it connects through to South Joseph Street?
Sure. In 2008, when we took the job, we did the research in the archives and found the prospect tract in various other subdivisions that were created roughly around the same time. The one unusual thing about this plot was that at the, what you would consider the terminus of James Street, there was a small strip that led down to, is it Joseph Street? Joseph Street. I don't, at first blush, I think you would think that was uncommon, but if you put this in context of the time that it was established, I, I think you need to realize that it was done in 1911, and the most common modes of transportation in 1911 were walking, horseback, horse and buggy, or streetcars. There was a spring down below on Joseph Street. It made sense that the person who, the two people who developed the plot had the wherewithal to leave a quick access ticket down to Joseph Street instead of walking all the way around.
And to the best of your knowledge and your experience, that that, that walkway still exists on paper today?
We found no record of any deed transferred to any private party.
And if it were to have been abandoned under Rhode Island general law, would there have to have been some recording in the land evidence records?
Up until last year, it would have had to have been recorded in the council minutes. As of last year, it now would have to be an administrative subdivision recorded in conformance with the rules and regulations.
And to the best of your knowledge, there is no such?
We found none.
Right. I'm gonna ask you to review a document. And ask that this be marked as, at this point in time, joint or, for ID would be, I'm not sure what number we're on plaintiffs. I'll call it one, or petitioner is one.
I'm on it, Nancy. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, the document that has just been handed to the board is a Boyer Associates survey. One page. Which is.
It's much better at 24 by 36.
Yeah, I bet. Looks like it might be dated November 25, 2015.
Yes, 2024.
Oh, no, there it is. November 29, 2024, in stamped by Mr. Boyer. And we can mark that as the next petitioner's exhibit.
And I'll correct when I said the last time I visited the site was November of 2024.
And Mr. Boyer, you personally located a drain in the area of the terminus of James Street, correct?
Yeah, that was initially located in 2008, but yes, it's still, it's still.
And does that drain go down the length of James Street towards South Joseph Street?
When we opened that, and I think that was in 2009 or 2010, the only pipe we found was heading in a southerly direction into the caster's property.
So it's your belief, based on your experience and personal knowledge and having gone there, that that drain does not have any impact on the terminus of James Street and is not part of that infrastructure?
I believe that to be true, and I think there's also something from the engineers department that shows that there's a, the line goes in a southerly direction.
Yeah, and if the engineer were here tonight, we could ask him that question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm also gonna ask you to, you put on this plan, which is a true and accurate copy of your plan, correct?
It appears to be.
Which I would ask that it be deemed a full exhibit.
There's no action required, Mr. Chairman. You take the evidence for what it's worth.
You mentioned some new, newly constructed.
Yeah, so in the, in the blow up at the bottom right-hand corner of the plan, you'll see where it says James Street, and to the right of that, there's an area that says newly constructed wall, and then there's a symbol of a stockade fence that is on the westerly and southerly side of that wall.
Okay, and do you believe that that wall is such that it would prevent a plow from pushing snow down to the terminus of James Street?
The terminus out on St. Joseph's Street or the?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I got the J's messed up. Would it prevent a plow from going through, down to the terminus of James Street?
It would, well, it would, it certainly, I'll answer this, it's certainly within the right of way.
Okay.
It's, it's within the plotted right of way.
Okay.
Where they, whether they would push snow, I don't know, but it would definitely prohibit anyone from getting down St. Joseph, down to St. Joseph's.
And, and how is that, how is that wall constructed from your personal viewing of it?
It was a block wall. I, I think it was a versilock wall, but I'm not sure.
Okay, but versilock, our blocks are made out of cement?
Yes.
Some sort of aggregate?
Yes.
Okay. And when you first surveyed the area in 2008, that wasn't there?
That was not.
Do you have any belief as to when that was placed there?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'm gonna point out that the evidence that's being received by this board has nothing to do with the request that's before this board, which is a recommendation to the council on whether or not to abandon a portion of James Street, not whatever has been placed in the right of way or who may have done it, or when they have done it.
Respectfully, Mr. Solicitor, if we are going to talk about these type of things, I'm trying to understand why staff switch their recommendation from one in favor of this application to one against this application. Seemingly, the difference, the only difference in the staff reports and what staff relies on is that there is going to impact infrastructure at the terminus of James Street and the ability of the town to need to put snow there and to access it. But if there's a brick wall preventing that, sort of moots the point, in my opinion. So with all due respect to your solicitor, I think what's placed in that road and the infrastructure in, on that road and at the terminus is absolutely essential to the testimony here today.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the evidence being put before you has nothing to do with the request. Whatever is there can be altered or changed at the town's whim and request to accomplish what they need to if it's in the right of way. This is completely irrelevant.
We have to.
So then.
We have to stand by our engineering report.
So respectfully.
Is unambiguous. Says there is the potential to utilize the area for future stormwater drainage or other utility improvements.
So, well, Ms., Mr. Chair.
Regardless of what's there.
Respectfully, this board, two months ago, asked the engineer to come here before you. I asked the engineer to come here before you. I asked your solicitor, I asked your planner to reaffirm this board's request to have that engineer come here before you. It is highly incredible for a professional to notch, professional engineer to one, there's no stamp on that document. We don't know what capacity he's speaking in and to what degree of professional certainty, and the applicant in this board doesn't get the opportunity to address it, the, the statements, doesn't get the opportunity to determine the truth and veracity of, of that engineer. It is against the whole concept of this type of proceeding to be allowed to send in a sheet of paper and not be questioned on it. We don't know what information he used. In fact, he even acknowledges in that letter, which I don't think this board should consider or be part of the evidence before the board because there's no one here to put it before the board. So in there, they say they were inaccurate last time.
What, what part of the letter are you contending that was inaccurate?
He states that he used.
Excuse, sorry. What the chair was just saying is that the town, the town engineer's recommendation was that we keep this open for potential future use, and what aspect of that?
So that's not, so pre, the prior letter. And we don't get to discuss with the engineer why he wrote, why he drafted two letters, why his second letter directly contradicts his first letter. I don't get to question him as to why he did not do this investigation the first time. I don't get to question him as to what the difference in, what level of scrutiny that he put forth. that he put forth between the two letters.
You gotta recognize...
I don't get to question him...
You have to recognize...
About his truth and veracity, and I don't know how that applicant, that letter gets before this board when there's no one here to present it to the board. Staff, it's not staff's letter. Staff does not have the ability to stand behind that letter.
We, we use the engineering department. We're not engineers.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can't...
Not contending you are, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, please. He's making an argument that is completely inapplicable. This is not a court of law. You're not receiving evidence like in a court of law. He's not entitled to cross-examine anybody. This isn't even a public hearing. The fact is, is that you've allowed this to have public comment when it's not even warranted. So there's no right to cross-examination. There's no rules of evidence in play here. The document has been presented to you by your, by your own engineer whose qualifications you know full well. It's evidence that you give the weight of, just like you give any weight to any evidence before you. It's not a court of law. So nothing that he just said has any bearing this evening. The evidence is before you. You're here to make a recommendation. That's what you're here for. Not to try something, not to put on witnesses, not to make a record. That is not the purpose of this evening.
So the purpose isn't to establish a record?
I've just stated what I stated, Mr. Serta. Don't challenge me again.
You're challenging me?
I'm advising the board. That's what I've done. Don't raise your voice to me.
I didn't raise my voice.
You did.
Are you raising your voice, Mr. Levesque? I'm not either. So I guess I would ask the, the board to then consider the two letters.
Excuse me?
I would ask the board to read the two letters from your town engineer in, in, in consecutive order, where he made a very strong statement the first time.
Okay. What we have now is a recommendation from the airing division, the engineering division, that the town not abandon a portion of James Street right away. So that's what we're going by. The opinion of the engineering department. Nothing to do with any previous letters.
It's...
We're going by the, the recommendation of, of the engineering department. They, they've gone out, they give an extensive engineering report. They talk about, you know, all the pipes, um, terminus...
So what was your, my review of the pipes was that the prior letter...
So I just go by the recommendation.
I, I know, I'm asking you to read the rec, I'm asking you to read certain specific parts of the recommendation, including the parts where they say, our prior letter, all of that stuff about the piping, about infrastructure, we were wrong. We use GIS, which we all know as engineers and says right on it, not a true and accurate rendition and not to be used for accuracy.
All right, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say it again. We're going by the recommendation not to abandon any portion of James Street. That's not gonna change.
Which, who's "we"?
The, the engineering department.
Okay.
And as, as a member of the board, that's who I'm going by. Not an applicant.
So, and which letter are you giving more credibility?
The letter we got right now.
And why are you giving that more credibility than the prior letter?
The original previous letter, as far as, as far as, you know, that I saw.
You didn't see a report, a prior report from the town engineer?
The most, the most current letter is the one that, that, that we are going by. A, a prior letter, you know, may have made a prior rec, may or may not have made a prior recommendation. Now, I mean, to my mind's eye, you get more information, you might change your, you might change your recommendation. You further look into a subject, you might change your recommendation. Have you never done that?
But don't, I, don't you think that it's prudent for, first of all, I think that if I, I would one, wanna face the people and say, I made a mistake. I mean, not, and acknowledge that mistake.
The town engineer is not required to do that.
Well, required. What do you mean, they're not, they're not required to weigh in on this either? But the, this board, at the last meeting we were here, asked the town engineer on the record to come here. You're all volunteers. You volunteer your time. My, my client is paying for experts, my client is going through the, at the, the, playing by the rules. We're asking a town official to come before the board and fa, and explain their recommendation and to explain why there's a massive inconsistency and explain what was the difference in the research between the two times. The board did ask that though, sir.
So I asked that the town engineer be here last time, that's where it's at, because I wasn't quite satisfied with what, what I was seeing. Um, since then, I've read his report and I, and I am satisfied. But on an email attached to the last agenda of November 7th, 2004, our town engineer to Ms. Latandra and Peter Carradino says the following. The plan that you provide depicts a catch basin adjacent to the area of the right of way, uh, requested for abandonment. A pipe that, from that catch basin discharges westward, southwestward, South Joseph, uh, through the requested abandonment area. The pipe direction shown on the plan you provided is not accurate. And, uh, he attached the survey and, and it goes on to talk about that that pipe discharges in, uh, directed at the head wall shown on St. Jo, uh, St., yeah, St. Jo, South Joseph. Uh, the town should not abandon the requested area due to the presence of stormwater and infrastructure. Now that left me with some questions and wanted to ask for, you know, further input. And we got further input on today's meeting. And, oh, by the way, the recommendation from the staff at that meeting also on this is, this is the recommendation that came to the planning board on November 19th. Page three of three, it says, um, the recommendation here, uh, for the abandonment at the terminus of, uh, 228 square feet at the terminus of James Street be denied based on the finding of fact, stormwater drainage, infrastructure, and comprehensive plan consistency. So that was the, that was what came from the staff to the planning board last time. We heard, we heard what we heard. I requested more information, um, and we are here tonight and that we have more information. The town engineer looked at it again and he provided us with an updated memo. And that's where we're at.
That is, and I guess my discussion around that is, the town engineer says there's no infrastructure in the area and staff still left that statement and that as the reason for denying this application. The storm water managed, the storm water and the infrastructure referenced is actually on the caster's property.
Okay. And, and that may, I, I'm not sure if that's the case, but that would not be unusual in our town. I live in a neighborhood where storm water goes underneath, it goes behind houses, goes, um, in, in, in certain areas of this town, as it was developed, the, the, the DPW at the time, the engineers at the time took the, the easiest path for water to flow. And so it is quite possible, we've had instances in this town where we had to, you know, deal with a problem that was on a property. I know for a fact that the town routinely goes to Central Baptist Church on Elm Street and clears out a catch ba, okay, uh, catch basin because stormwater infrastructure for this town goes through there as on its way to the river. So it is not unusual. If you're telling me that this infra, it might go on the caster's property...
And, and my point is to use the infrastructure as the reason to deny this application, when the infrastructure doesn't go in that location and the town engineer now acknowledges that that, uh, infrastructure doesn't go in the location, I don't understand why that wasn't removed from staff's report if that's not true. The town, the comprehensive consistency plan, you can go any which way you want on that. Consistency and determination of that isn't, uh, like an appraisal, it's in the eye of the beholder. But it's clear from this report that infrastructure is not there, yet staff still holds on to the idea that this application should be denied because of infrastructure.
The town engineer's current memo, most current memo...
Yeah.
Again, with more information that we've received, is that the town, it, that his recommendation to this board is that this be denied for potential future use of that right of way to place infrastructure, not whether it may have been included in a report or not in the past.
I'm talking about staff's recommendation in their report.
I'm looking at the town engineer's recommendation right now.
I'm asking you to look at something different, sir. I'm asking you to look at the recommendation from staff in your report that still speaks to the fact that infos, that they're alleging that infrastructure is in the area. And even your town engineer says there's no infrastructure in the area.
And, and I see, excuse me, I see nowhere in, and if you could point me to the page number, you know, I would appreciate that, but I am not seeing it. What I am seeing is the town engineer saying that a drawing he was looking at that was up on the, shown on a plan that was provided is not accurate. He doesn't, but he doesn't say he knows it goes on someone else's property. He's just saying what was represented on a piece of paper is not accurate. That's all he's saying. Nothing more.
Well, he says that it was consistent. Understood. I'll defer to the board at this point. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else gonna speak on this matter? Go to the podium, state your name, address.
Robert Lombardo, I represent Megan Nelson. She is in a butter.
Point of order, Mr. Lombardo was a member of the town council when this application was initially heard.
Excuse me?
No, I have a Robert, per Roberts Rules of Order, I can raise a point of order at any point in time, Mr. Chair.
Not a member.
You'd have to be a member to do that, Mr. Chair, and he's not.
Mr. Lombardo is barred by the rules from speaking on this application. He was a member of the town council when this application was initially filed.
All right.
He, he's correct, I was a member, but I recused. I recused from it, so. And I recused because I represented her and I've represented her in the past. I've represented her many times. I probably know more about this, this issue than anybody, but I've listened to, I listened to 40 minutes of the meeting on February 19th. I listened to another 40 minutes here tonight and there's nothing relevant that's been said. This idea with the stormwater, it has no bearing on this case. And so I just wanna go through the law. Now, uh, I just want you to, to direct your attention to what Nancy Latandra told you in her handout. Uh, memorandum, staff recommendation, I'm reading from the November 14th. Public use. The town council, this is the first page, E1, you should have it. The town council is required to find that the property has ceased to be used for public highway purposes. That's what you're supposed to, has it been ceased to be used for public highway? That's it. Not whether there's anything's underneath it. So I just want you to, that's the main recommendation, has it been used? There has been nothing here tonight that you've heard and the 19th that ever said, they put no evidence, they made no claims that it's not being used for public use. So this fails right off the bat, but I'm gonna go through the law with you. I'm sorry to take the time, I was not gonna address you. I thought this would be taken care of very quickly. But I will, uh, let you know that Sean Lacy said when this came across, we're not gonna abandon this piece of property. It's not gonna be abandoned. Town council...
Point of order, Mr. Lombardo has personal knowledge of this at this application as he was on the town council at the time and is barred from speaking.
All right, let me read the minutes from the town council meeting.
Please, don't interrupt again. No one interrupted you. So he's, he's got the podium. Let him speak. You have no bearing to keep interrupting him.
Petition for road abandoned. This is Monday, August 5th, 2024. Petition for road abandonment came before, uh, President Steven Sirdott representing petitioners. Town manager Lacy explained that, this is from the minutes, not from me. Town manager Lacy explained that a petition for road abandoned for James Street has been previously addressed by the council. He stated there was an issue regarding a right of way. However, after the property was surveyed, it was discovered that it was not a right of way. So Mr. Boyer's, uh, uh, Mr. Boyer's, uh, survey of the, the land, it's already been rejected by the town council. Mr. Conley's still there, it's gonna be rejected again. Okay, there's no right of way, there's no strip. They've determined, they looked at all her deeds, and I was hoping Mr. Lawler was here because he was around back then, uh, and she owns the property. And I think somebody said this last time, I think it was the chairman last time, said, we're not relitigating that strip of land that they're talking about. That's her property. It's already been determined. They told her to put the fences up. That was, uh, that was done, I think Rooney was, Rooney and, and Lacy, they told her to do that. But anyway, I wanna just start with the law, with the law really, because the law is very important and they didn't talk about the law. And I'm not gonna tell you the law, I'm gonna read it from this O'Reilly versus Town of Gloucester, uh, 621a, second, 697, Supreme Court, 1993, uh, where they lay out, uh, the abandonment process. And this is important. Uh, it is clear in Rhode Island that a town cannot abandon its obligation to maintain a right of way by simply failing to fulfill its main, maintenance obligations. Now you'll see this is important when you read their petition. They're alleging that the maintenance wasn't done and, and, and I hope you've read that. It cannot be, you cannot abandon it for that reason. There's only one reason. You no longer use it as a highway. Now, the Supreme Court started with 2462. Lieutenant, uh, Ms. Latandra gave you, uh, 2461, which is the main statute. But, but this way important, it's requires that a town attempting to abandon a right of way to provide notice to land, uh, landowners whose land butts the right of way. Pursuant to 2462, a town must hold a hearing so the landowners may argue against the abandonment, present evidence concerning damages the landowner will incur if the abandoned proceedings go forward. Now that doesn't apply to you. It applies to the town council. That's why I held back, but at the next hearing, the next level, she'll have to receive notice in the mail and, and be given a time to argue against the abandonment. And if you abandon this, she's entitled to damages and we get to prove what the damages will be. So those are outside what you're doing, but that's what the law says. Uh, in addition to the pre-abandonment notice, which, uh, we talked about, it requires the town to provide the public with a post-abandonment notice. So not only do you have to notify that you're gonna abandon it, but if you abandon it, the town needs to let everybody know and you have to put a sign out there. You're gonna put a big sign on a dead end street that says, "Not a public highway." What are you gonna do that for? It's gonna, what are you gonna, go down and run right into her house? It's absolutely absurd. This is an absurd, everybody in the town of Westerly who has a piece of property on a street, part of that property belongs to the town of Westerly. They put their mailbox there, they put plants, they do trees. If you go to Watch Hill, all that's, all those trees are on public property. Because the, it was old buildings and the, the streets were closed. But the town's not gonna abandon those or make them take down those trees because they'd have to make everybody in Westerly take down the priest. We don't do that. This is her, back of her property butts the road and the neighbor is trying to take her property and get it abandoned. You, can you imagine what will happen? Everybody's neighbor, if you're not getting into the neighbor, will come in here asking to abandon the property in front of the neigh, their neighbor's property. It's absurd. Anyway, uh, and the last thing you have to do is you, you're gonna have to re, if you wanna abandon this property and it's abandoned, it reverts back to the casters and Megan Nelson. And I challenge you, any of you here, to tell me what the piece of property that's being abandoned is. Can anybody tell me what piece of, what the piece of property is? Nobody knows because they haven't provided you a map of what they wanna do. Now, Ms. Latandra has, oh, Ms. Latandra has provided you, provided you one, if you look at, again, that E2. See this one? You see that they're, and they've talked about this, the, the four, where it said, that's what they're saying they're abandoning, right? That's what you think? Or what do you think? Do you know what they wanna abandon? How can you abandon property if you don't even know what's gonna be abandoned? How can you abandon property if you don't even know what's going to be abandoned? Now. Let's go to the petition. I hope you have a copy in front of you. Right here. Okay. First of all, they say intersecting street number two, South Joseph Street. Nothing intersects. South Joseph Street does not.
Can you give me the date on the top of that one?
Uh, this is July 11, 2004.
Okay.
And it says petition for street abandonment, application for street abandonment. And then it says length of proposed street to be abandoned. Street length in total, 427. Length of street portion to be abandoned, 76.6 feet. I was there last night. I mean, it's not abandoned. I used the property to park on last night. The piece that they're talking about, it barely fits my car and I have a small car. So 76 feet is what they're saying they want. 76 feet goes all the way to their front door. They want to take the whole street. They're not telling you that. Then you go to street conditions, unmaintained gravel and grass, doesn't matter. Illegal grounds for granting petition for street abandoned. There is only one legal ground. You no longer use it for the public. What do they say? See attached title report. That's got nothing to do with it, but let's go look at the title report. Oh, before we do that, additional information? They say see Rhode Island General Law 2451. You know what that is? Duty to maintain highways. I've just told you, the law is clear. The maintenance of the highway has nothing to do with it. They're claiming that you don't maintain it, therefore it's abandoned. The law says that's not true. I'll defer to your solicitor though, because I'm sure he knows. But let's turn to the title report because you have that in your, in front of you. Pilgrim Title. Guy testified the last time you were here. Only two people were here. He specifically said, look at right the record owner, Joseph Clorin. They are maintaining, the town of Westerly does not own this. And it's going to get worse. If you give me five more minutes, it's going to get weirder. And they say the premises, this title premises, if you read it, strip of land, extension James Street between lots 22 and 23. That's her property. We've already done this in 2019. It's hers. She has the deed to it. I've seen the deed. They're wrong, they're reading it wrong. But anyway, they're maintaining that you don't own it and they're saying abandon something you don't own. They will not give in that the town owns this property. Now, if you keep switching, if you keep going, there's this other document they provided. Two pages. Town of Westerly to Castor. It's not going to Castor. The law is clear. It's, if you're going to abandon it and give it away, it's divided. How are you going to divide it when you don't even know where it is? But, but the, the piece of property they're talking about, it's a quadra, it's four sided. What do you call, it's a quadrilateral, four sided, that we talked about earlier. You saw that? You know which one I'm talking about? However, read this thing. Have you read it? Beginning to point a southern line of Jamesy, this is going to be in the deed. Fence, fence running in a general northerly direction bounded Westerly in part by land now formerly belonging to Megan Nelson and in part of other land of this grant or a distance of 7.5 feet to a point. Fence turning another angle, fence turning another angle, fence turning another angle, fence turning another angle, fence turning, there's 13. That's a regular tri-decagon. Where is the, where's the map? And not only that, do you know how difficult it is to find the area of a quadrilateral when the sides are equal? I don't know how they got the area, this 228. You need to, you need to do a complicated formula. It's called Bert Schneiders' formula. Very complicated. So I don't even know how they got the square area. They used 228. But you've got problems here. You don't know what property is being abandoned. You've got 76 feet, blah, blah, blah. Uh, so I don't know how you can abandon something you don't know what, where it is. Now. While I was researching this, I did searches on, on the town's website where you go into all the council minutes and the planning board minutes, and I searched under Castor, James Street. And I found this special meeting from December 9th, 2019. And it was an executive session, litigation Casters versus the heirs of Clorin, James Street. And I thought, what the hell is that? So I looked it up and the Casters filed a superior court action. Verified complaint under the penalties of perjury that James Road, the roads in James Street was owned by the claretins and that they were taking it by adverse possession. Even though the law in Rhode Island is very clear, there's only one way to abandon a law, a road once it's been made public or the town has turned it into a highway. We've just gone through those. You cannot take it by eminent, I mean, you cannot take it by adverse possession. It's clear. But they tried to do this. They tried to pull a fast one. They said unknown heirs or devises of Joseph Clorin. And they claimed that they were, they for 10 years shoveled, blown, and plowed snow on the road. Just them, cleared leaves, removed garbage, maintained extra storm drains, caused proper drainage, caused no parking signs to be erected, independently enforced the no parking signs, maintained security surveillance. Let me tell you something. She lives in a house, constant 24/7, 365 days a year surveillance. I sit in their kitchen all the time. It says several times, all the windows are closed because they've got the house on 5 James Street and they've got the one on 10 and the cameras are there all the time. Kennedy knew about this, the Kennedy administration, the Rooney administration, and now the Lacy. Lacy's been on this for 30 years as a police officer. You look at the police reports. Paul Gingerella was a patrol officer down here. It's nightmare. I've got hundreds of pages of police reports. But anyway, they tried to claim that they were taking the road by adverse possession. Somehow the town got wind of this. It was on here. And I believe your solicitor showed up when there was a motion. They were just going to notice that this complaint was in the newspapers. Nobody was going to show up. I don't know how they would have gotten it, but they were trying to take it by adverse possession. My point is, they don't believe the town owns the road. So if they don't believe the town owns the road, and this is still going on, this has not been dismissed, how can you give it away? They can't have it both ways. This was a scam. And he caught it. I don't know what he said. I guess he probably said the Latin, something, the Latin words for WTF. Something like that, because this is crazy. So I don't know how much you want to hear, but it goes on and on. Megan Nelson's family has lived in that house. She's lived there since 2000. Well. The house was built, I believe, in 1917. Clorin sent, sold the property, a lot of that property in South Joseph Street to Galucci. That was her great, great grandfather. Joe Potter grew up in that house. All right. I don't want to, and she's been, she spent her first eight years in that house. Her sister lives next door. Her mother lives across the street. They've been living there forever. Now, the Casters moved in in 19, they bought the property in 87. It was a quitclaim deed from Ms. Castor's parents. And they built the house in 1988. I did a public records request to the town, March 26th, looking for the zoning and building permits for that house. Nothing. They just built the house. No building, no zoning. And so you'll see Paul LeBlanc, I've got a letter here from Paul LeBlanc back in the day, where he says the setback for the front is only five feet, something like that. There was no setbacks. That's the problem. That's why they've been fighting. I can go on and on and on. I don't want to take your time. I don't want gentlemen over there to get mad at me, but there's no permits. That was the problem. No zoning. That house doesn't belong there. I don't even think it was a proper subdivision of the property. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't really want to beat it to death, but you don't know the property. You can't abandon it. That was, the burden was on them to tell you where the property is. Oh, and how do I get to, where they got the 76 feet from? I do want to tell you that. So they didn't supply any maps to you, but when they went to court, they sure did. That's the 70. Goes right to their front door. That part of the street, 70 feet at the end. You see what they're asking for?
Mr. Chairman, can, can we see that? Can that get passed around, please?
It's linear feet, so I'm assuming they did. That's what they want, or that's what they're asking you to give them. That's the whole street. What they want to do, and it makes it clear, is they're trying to, they've been trying for 30 years to keep her from driving onto her property. She's been driving on it her whole life. The family's been using it and now they want to take them. I'm not going to, I think I've made my point. I don't think you can, and I'm going to sit down, but I, I will, when this comes in for the town council, I'm going to blast them. But I do wanted you to let you know one thing, how I started to represent her. The Casters had a driveway down there and part of their driveway was in the road. That's been, I got a letter from Mr. Boyer right here to the Casters, telling them that their driveway is on the road. It's impossible to turn around. I went down to visit her last night. I parked right down there. I back up all the way. You can't turn around. When she tried to turn around, two of her tires would hit their driveway. I don't even know if they were on the town's property or not. And so they'd call the police every day and Lacy was a captain at that time. He says, listen. And they say, if it's two tires on your driveway, we're not arresting them for trespassing. But if they drive all, she drives all the way on your property, then we'll arrest it. That wasn't good enough for the Casters. The Casters filed a criminal action on a private prosecution against Megan Nelson. Now, you will not find private prosecutions anywhere left in the United States. Massachusetts outlawed them in the 1800s, United States, I think in the 1970s, federal. We still have it in Rhode Island, only state left. So they went in and she had to face criminal charges.
Point of order. I'd just like to ask this solicitor, is this line appropriate for this discussion?
No, I've had my light on for that purpose. And so I'd ask Mr. Lombardo to wrap up on the issue.
I tried. I tried. I'm not going to argue like that people did. I would like to get the, oh, no, I don't need that back. I have plenty of copies.
And if I can, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify one point, I'm not going to comment on the argument that you heard from Mr. Lombardo. I'm going to comment only on the law, which I agree with, with one exception. The statement made with respect to 2461, it's actually broader than it's not being used. The language is, or any part of that right of way, has ceased to be useful to the public. And what you have in the public work, the town engineer's report is he sees use potentially in the future. Just wanted to clarify that.
No, too late. Yeah, your chance. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? If not, I'll entertain the board for a motion.
Motion to the planning board deny the request to.
There's a draft.
It would be, yeah, there is a draft motion, but the motion would in essence be, if that's the direction you're going, would be to make a negative recommendation to the town council on the abandonment of James Street.
Yeah, so moved.
And, and because you agree that the portion of James Street still has use for the public.
Second. All in favor of the discussion?
Oh, discussion, sorry, sorry, discussion. So this area has, this issue has come up here before. It's come up previously in town. I have driven down there. The driveway is back up to each other. I think that the motion to deny is appropriate. I'll be voting in favor of it because this will just, anything else? And the point that was made during the discussion by Mr. Lombardo is, and I know this from when I was on the council. We talked about a road abandonment issue on Friendship Street. It gets split right down the middle, half and half. That's what, that typically happens. It doesn't, somebody didn't get the whole piece. So I'll be voting in favor of it. That's my only point.
Any other discussion? All in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
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 I used to have a motion is denied.
You mean petition, correct, Mr. Chairman? The petition is denied.
Oh, petition is denied, sorry. Did you get that, Chloe? Petition is denied. Okay, moving right along. 2021 MJ LD3. Combined preliminary plan amendment and final plan review, major mixed use land development, Kazi LLC. 92100 Granestree, assesses map 67 lot 275. As counsel present?
Yes.
Think, Nance, Madam Planner, do you have, do you want to start us off or shall we have the petitioner start us off? I know it's a little history, yeah.
I do, would just like to give you a little history of this matter was before the planning board previously was approved through preliminary plan. Since that point, there's been a lot of construction that's been done at the site. Some of what has, has been, some of that construction is not in compliance with what the original approval was. What you're looking at during this public hearing process is, excuse me, the changes that were made from what was approved to what is there today. And they're requesting approval of an amended preliminary plan and final plan approval. So what we will be doing is looking at all of the final items that needed to be completed or were completed to date and still may need to be completed to, in order to button up this project. Okay?
Okay, so to be clear, this, this has, does have something to do with the, with the previous plan?
Yes.
Even though it, it looks nothing the same.
It's an amendment to the previous plan. And what the, what the engineer has been asked to do is to do a comparison between what was previously approved and what is there and do now and explain why the changes have taken place. Just so you know, the town, the town staff, engineering, myself and building and zoning and the emergency services, public safety, have reviewed what is on the site now. And there are three items that are outstanding that we have been discussing with the applicant, their attorney and Mr. Duhamel, their engineer. with the applicant, their attorney, and Mr. Duhamel, their, their engineer. One is the stormwater. DOT is satisfied with the stormwater as it's been designed, and DOT has agreed that the situ, that the situation, with the current situation. And the reason why they, they are making that determination is because the stormwater from the site is being infiltrated, but then going into the state's stormwater system before it gets to the town's stormwater system. The second thing has to do with curb cuts. DOT is, has specific instructions with respect to the curb cut on Granite Street. There's a curb cut that's, that's been closed, but the sidewalk needs to be repaired, and the sidewalk raised to completely, to complete that process. There's also two curb cuts on Tower Street. The one that is furthest to, I'm gonna get my directions mixed up, I think it's north on Tower Street, that is supposed to be closed, that was, it was approved previously to be closed and to, for the sidewalk to be repaired, and the town and DOT both agree that that should still take place. The final thing is the curb cut that is, that is to provide both ingress and egress onto Tower Street. That curb cut as previously designed was to be 24 feet wide. It is now 19 feet wide. That, the DOT and the town are insisting that it be redone, and it be made the 24 feet wide, so that the two-way traffic can comfortably come and go off the site. There's one other matter, and that is with respect to a fence line along Tower Street. I brought this to the attention of Mr. Nardone yesterday. It appears that the fence is, is currently located right on top of a manhole cover for the sewer in the area, and staff, staff has requested that that, that fence be moved behind the manhole cover, away from Tower Street, so that it can be completely accessible to, to our utilities department. So those are the main items that I think are up for discussion. There has been also a, they now know who their, most of their tenants are going to be, and there has been the addition of three apartments on the site, so it's now a mixed-use development. So to the extent that that has affected the, the parking requirements, and may affect site circulation, as well as pedestrian access, that is something that I feel needs reconsideration. So, that's what I, all I have to say.
Madam Planner, are you in possession of, of a letter or documentation from the Rhode Island Department of Education regarding this plan that's before us?
Referring to DOT? Rhode Island DOT, not education? I said education.
With, I'm sorry. With regard to this, with regards to this project, are you in possession of that, the, are we in possession of the town?
Yes, we are.
And do we have a copy of it?
I didn't know it wasn't, it wasn't in the package, I have shared it with Mr. Nardone.
Okay, well, Mr. Nardone, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. William Nardone, attorney for the applicant. With me this evening is Joe Duhamel of Dupree Engineering, the civil engineering firm handling this project, and I agree in principle with everything that the town planner has said. She's accurate in reducing this to those four or so items. I'll take them. The DOT did send us a letter. I got it yesterday, it was provided to the applicant Friday, I believe, and it was based upon, and it states the results of a site meeting that we had last week with representatives of DOT, representatives of the applicant, representatives of the town engineering department, representatives from Dupree Engineering, and I was there, I think, I think I remember being there. So, the discussion centered around initially changes to drainage, and the meeting was actually brought about by requests from the applicant, because we didn't want to go through this redesign one more time, other than this. So we wanted everyone in the same place, at the same time, on the same page. So, there are modifications to the drainage system, and I'll let Joe Duhamel address the technical aspects of it. It is slightly different than what was approved, it's been explained in detail to Rhode Island Department of Transportation, excuse me, and again, they were at the site to physically inspect and examine the open holes, I guess, the open areas that are gonna be instrumental in this drainage system. So, the first statement by DOT, that they have reviewed and approved the proposed drainage modifications as shown on the revised plan set. Again, Joe addressed those details. The curb cut that the town planner referenced along Granite Street, you'll note that there's a curb cut that is very close to that intersection. It has been closed by the developer by the addition of a curb within the parking area, and a berm, and an area for planting along the Granite Street road frontage. The curb cut itself physically still exists. The decision of DOT, upon, it's about 60 feet from the Granite Street Tower Street intersection, DOT requires that it be closed. Upon consultation with DOT Office of Safety, closure of the existing curb cut will be required. DOT, and this is critical, DOT will waive the pavement moratorium, provided that the disturbance to the existing pavement structure is minimized to the maximum extent practicable. The completion of this work will be a condition of the bond release, so the applicant has to post a bond with the state for these improvements. Not posted with the town, it's posted with the state. And in order to release that bond, that work has to be completed. Anecdotally, the thinking is, it's not gonna be done during the summer, peak traffic, as long as it's done prior to the end of the calendar year, it should suffice. The disturbance of the pavement, because it, that road was paved within, I believe it's five years, Joe, the cutoff? Yeah. Because that was paved within, within five years, typically DOT requires that if you cut any part of it, you have to pave curb to curb. In this instance, they're not gonna require that, they're gonna allow the cut to be approximately the fog line, which is the white stripe that's a couple of feet off the curb line on the blacktop, so they don't have to cut that far out. Replace the curb with granite curbs and concrete sidewalk. The Tower Street curb is the next item that they address. The applicant is proposing to keep the existing 19-foot-wide curb cut with two-way traffic for driveway along Tower, Tower Hill Road, Tower Street. It's noted that the plans called widening, excuse me, the approved plans called for widening the existing driveway to 24 feet, and with three-foot granite transition curbs. But again, DOT consulting with their Office of Safety has concluded that, that existing 19-foot opening and remain at 19 feet, provided it's only utilized as a one-way entrance to the property. So, it doesn't say that it has to be built to 24 feet, provided it's one-way in, and there would, would require appropriate signage and striping indicating that. And that's the option that the developer has chosen, rather than tear up another sidewalk, cut the curb, and do more deconstruction, and then reconstruction to that entrance. So it's agreed between the applicant and DOT that it would be 19 feet, one-way entrance, and properly signed. The fence that Nancy mentioned, that goes along Tower Street, you may have noticed it in your travels by there, it's black chain link, and it does go over a manhole, after sewer, sewer manhole, and the applicant owner has already contacted their fence contractor, and that fence is gonna be moved in accordance with Nancy's suggestion, which was in the email to me a couple of days ago. So the fence contractor is gonna bring that fence southerly, a little bit further onto the property, so the town has unobstructed access to that manhole, in the event that they need it. The other modification is a change of use. The main building that's gonna house a restaurant on the first floor, restaurant slash coffee shop, had been slated for storage on the second floor, because there was no definitive use at the time. What we have now proposed and has been framed out are three one-bedroom apartments. Separate access, you don't have to go through the restaurant to get up there, separate access. I believe it's on the easterly side of the building. The site, and as Nancy mentioned, that has parking implications, again, Joe will get into those details, but the site has more than sufficient parking for the proposed uses. The third building, the, the middle building is proposed as an auto parts store. The third building, which is the one closest to the shopping center, it's like that freestanding garage, is most likely going to be an outlet for golf carts, for storage and repair, electric golf carts. And that type of a use doesn't require a lot of parking. Retail is typically based on the square footage of the building, and the parking, again, required for a use like that is more than adequately accounted for in the, in the center. One thing that is not going to be there is a freestanding pylon sign, a big sign, that was originally proposed, that's been eliminated. The tenants of the buildings will have their own signage on the buildings, and obviously in compliance, whatever signage program they have, it's gotta be in compliance with the zoning regulations. If it were a freestanding pylon sign, for example, like the shopping center next door, or Westerly Crossings, or any of those type signs, that is more akin to a structure and would require approval by this board. It's just, it, it doesn't make sense, it's not attractive at that site, because the site is really limited in scope, and size, and utility. I think that covers the amendments that we're talking about, the specific design, and as Nancy indicated, we did receive a preliminary, preliminary plan approval, believe it or not, it was in January of 2023, so we've been back at this for two more years. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me. If not, I'll let Joe get into the details to the extent that we need to have additional details.
Any board member have any questions for Mr. Nardone? First, you wanna, you got one?
Yeah, I do have a quick question regarding the original use for, I guess what we'll call the main building, restaurant down below, storage on the second floor, and now we understand that it's being framed out for a different use and purpose. Has that been brought to this board before, or did you guys take that initiative upon yourselves to go forward with that, and then come here and kind of look at all these changes or revisions all at once?
It was, it was brought to administration, we've had a number of meetings with town officials, including the town planner, the building official, the zoning official, and in some instances, the town manager. And the framing that has been done in the building was all properly permitted by the town officials. The fact that it's a change of use is, it's an allowed use in that zone, mixed use, and the, the reception received was quite favorable, based not only upon the fact that three one-bedroom apartments, which are in high demand, but also helps to address the affordable housing situation in Westerly, as they, by design and utility, they will be quite affordable. So this is the first time that the board is hearing about that specific use, but it isn't something that would have had to come here to get approval to start banging nails. And, and they obviously can't be occupied without a CEO. The construction of the restaurant has been paramount, but the apartments have been framed and real utilities put in.
Thank you for your answer, wouldn't be the first time that we've been surprised, but on the other hand, I do appreciate your candor and your straightforwardness, thank you.
Will, will those apartments be LMI?
Not designated as LMI, we're not going through a comprehensive permit process, but by design and pricing, they will be low to moderate income affordable. Don't know, don't know yet.
A follow-up to that, if they are not deed restricted, they are not LMI, LMI?
They're not specifically designated, I understand.
They will count against us, they will count against us in the count of, of, correct? Of, Madam, right. So the bottom line is, is it's great that we say that they're gonna be LMI, and, you know, sitting around having a beer together, but the reality is, is the state of Rhode Island is the one that, and, and, and none of these, you're saying, for the record, none of these are LMI?
As we sit here now, no, they are.
As I sit here now, that's it.
Have you considered making them LMI?
This is the first time the topic has come up. We can certainly... We can certainly, I can certainly discuss that with the, with the developer.
I do have one other question and perhaps Mr. Duhamel can address it later on with regards to displacing the fencing to provide sufficient access to the, the manhole. That's confined space work, whether it's town employees or whether it's contractors. So at that point, please take into consideration, perhaps you already have, how far you really need to offset that fence with regards to tripod, support systems and all the other equipment that's now necessary under the prevailing labor codes to make sure that we can have safe access and egress into those confined spaces.
Yeah, yeah, Joe Duhamel, project manager at the pre-engineering. We can, we can take that account. We can work with the utility department on the final location of that fence. And, you know, we can look at that, yeah.
I have a question regarding the, the 19-foot entrance that's currently there. That was originally supposed to be 24 feet, correct?
That was shown on plans as 24.
24. So now the board's being asked so that the applicant is, is not further inconvenienced by having to cut the pavement to make that just, just an egress or just, yeah, okay, just an egress?
Just, just an entrance, just an entrance.
We just received the correspondence with our IDOT. In your conversations with them, did you, was there any consideration given to the amount of traffic? That's, so Granite Street is going to be the only two-way traffic entrance exit, correct?
Yes.
Was there any consideration given to, you know, the, the traffic that's already there? And how having now only one, you know, egress and ingress is going to affect traffic there? Tower Street's a lot, you know, it's a lot wider street. To my minds, I, I mean, that would be the better place to have the full 24 feet. Was there any, again, we just, just received this. So was there any discussion with our IDOT regarding that?
There were, DOT was aware of, obviously, the situation. We had a site meeting, they had seen the other plans. And their conclusion was it's up to the developer. If you want to have one-way, 19 feet is adequate. If you want to have two-way, it would have to be 24 feet. We had a traffic analysis done before preliminary.
Correct.
That's where we are with the, with that entrance and the width. The correspondence that you're referring to, Mr. Nix, I see letter dated April 10, 2025 from DOT?
Yes, I do.
Yep.
Just, just want to, want to be clear on something. The original approval, it was supposed to be 24 feet wide and the paved area going out onto Tower Street was two lanes, 24 feet of pavement. And the town is, considers that to be the minimum requirement for a two-way. The town would also like to continue, to see that be both an ingress and egress because of the opportunity that the light at Tower Street and Granite Street provides, okay?
Okay, so way back when, listen, way back when, in 2023, you had an original plan. And I have it in front of me and I look at the plan that you have now. And so in English, what happened? Why are we, why are we looking now? I mean, did, what problem are we solving and why? Because when you came in here, you said, this is what we want. And the planning board said,
Right.
We agree with you, this is what you should have. And now you're coming back and saying, well, no, no, we changed our mind. Why?
And it's, Joe will address the technicalities of that, but it's still.
I want English, that's why I asked you. Come on, Bill.
It's still what we want, the plan is still what we want. What has changed is the drainage and how it was going to work or maybe not going to work and how the drainage is now, and again, Joe can describe it, but piped along Granite Street down to a couple of catch basins near the, beyond the entrance. And you'll see that area that's all dug up in the southwestern corner of the property, closest to the shopping center. That is going to be the
Stormwater treatment.
Stormwater treatment area. And the, from those catch basins, there will be a connection into the state drainage system, which deal, which is a big deal, DOT approved that. That's where it's going, right? The state?
Yes, but I think it all sends back to the reconstruction of 92, the corner building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's.
That's a big reason for.
But, yeah, that was done prior. And, and how the reconstruction of 92 Granite, the corner building, the main building
Right.
affected the, the drainage.
So, so my, the next question is this. Does this property currently discharge into the storm drains? Or is all the storm water handled on the property currently?
It sheet flows into the Granite Street DOT drainage system. It sheet, if sheet flows into the DOT drainage system, doesn't have a direct.
How does it feed? Is there a pipe?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a current direct pipe.
It just overflows onto, onto the state highway.
Correct, correct. By the approved.
So it doesn't, so it doesn't contain the water on the property currently?
That's correct.
Okay, did it contain the water on the property prior to all the asphalt being put down? It didn't that neither, okay. All right, and the next question is on this, well, you know what, I'm just going to wait for Mr. Duhamel's presentation. I'll ask him. Thank you very much.
So the, one more simple, civil English response is what the current drainage system, this proposed drainage system is doing is aiding the retention of the water and treatment of the storm water on this property, rather than have it end up in Granite Street like it used to. So much less water will end up on Granite Street. It's being piped and it's going into that stormwater treatment area, rain garden or whatever is going to be in there. And eventually into a very big culvert that's going to go down School Street.
Into the river.
Eventually.
Into the river. And, and a river, for the record, is that.
And less water than with, less water than was going down there when it was sheet flowing onto the street.
A river that has a, currently has a Rhode Island DEM, TMDL, talking about point source and all of that. But you included in your discussions with DEM through DOT because DEM was involved in my, I believe, right?
Originally, originally this whole project, during the preliminary plan submission and approval, we, we saw and got approved DEM design. Also, DOT has to approve the drainage design because we are directly connecting to their system. So as, as Bill has mentioned, all the storm water existing, sheet flows directly into Granite Street. Proposed, even as amended, will, will sheet flow into this south area, this sand filter area for a stormwater treatment?
I mean, part, part of our responsibility here, as you girls well know, is not just development, but the environment and balancing out the development, so I look forward to that. One last question for you, Mr. Nardone. Is all the water coming off of this property going into the DOT storm drain? Or is it just under certain events like 10-year, 20-year or 10-year, 50-year, 100-year storm event?
Now, with all due respect to Mr. Gagne, that is a Joe Duhamel question, not William Nardone question.
Well, you're a smart guy.
What I can, what I can tell you is that in, in plain language, we're greatly improving the situation on that piece of property.
So, so there's, for DOT, their requirement is 10-year flow and volume, not to increase from existing conditions, that this design maintains that. Classified as a redevelopment from DEM, there is a reduction in impervious area from, you know, years past and development years past. It used to be the Hoxsey Building in the corner here. So less impervious overall gives us less storm water that ultimately end up into the drainage system. So overall, there's a net positive, a negative to the system.
You got a little negative going there.
So again, the paved areas, it's shaded on the plans. The buildings will be directed, and the buildings will be directed sheet flow into the pavement swell or into the two catch basins that now exist today. And sheet flow or discharge directly into that sand filter in the south. That will provide water quality treatment, control the tenure volume and flow, and then ultimately, again, discharge into DOT system. The change, the, the conversation we had with DOT earlier this month was to discuss the connection into, into their system. We were approved for connection, the way that we wanted to connect was different from what was previously approved. Instead of a pipe connection to the end, we're, we're now proposing a, a manhole structure. And we wanted to review those details with DOT before we did the work in, in the field. So we did that and they subsequently approved it. Not, not to mention the other stormwater system as part of this first phase or the initial scope is a infiltration basin that's for building three. It is shown on the rear side of the, of the building, but actually, since this plan was submitted, we were reverting back to what was previously approved. Where infiltration basin would be where my cursor is. And you could see that on the original approved plans. And that, that basin is just for the building roof runoff. So that area, that area of the pavement will be cut out and a stormwater basin will be provided there for that roof, that roof runoff from building three. As, as Bill mentioned, the, the site layout, the, the scope of the work, the conversations with DOT is all surrounded by maintaining existing curb cuts that are there today and then also enclosing some that, you know, that are not being used. So since the submission of the final plan and, you know, we've had a really productive meetings and calls with DOT about the site and, and improving it. So conversations of enclosing curb cuts, maintaining curb cuts, winding where, where needed to, all are consistent with the previously approved plans. The flow, traffic, circulation is still consistent. The, the building one, for example, the, the entrances compared to the previously approved and now they've, they've changed based on the use, you know, the restaurant use. We used to show overhead doors that had different, different layouts. With the addition of the residential factor, we have separate parking designated for when they come in line or when they were formally built on the north side of building two. So that's a change to the, the site layout and the configuration. And then with the new uses or the actual building uses, we've, we've adapted the parking count based on the zoning code to comply with required parking for the site. And we provide sufficient parking plus ADA spaces at each building.
You've, you've more than satisfied, and, and a whole lot more.
Yes.
I would, I would like to see a, a table of how you came about parking calculations and how, oh, is that it right there?
Yes, yes, there's a, there's a table provided on the site layout sheet of each building. We used to show each building as offices. And now that restaurant use and retail use, warehouse use, we've broken it down based on that.
So this is final approval, phase one only?
This is correct.
I ju, I just want to make that, I just want to make that clear. So, and while we're discussing, when we discussed the 24-foot wide intersection based on what the planning board decides, there's going to have to be some revisions to that corner there between phase one and phase two. Additionally, there is a lot of debris that's being stored in the area marked phase two. All cleaned up?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, fine. Because we could, because there will be a condition of approval that, that will say you need to return for, for phase two and that no work can be done until you get approval. So I appreciate that. I want to point out to the board as well that we haven't received a complete, a complete drawing here of what's the new, what's new and what's not. And so I would suggest that between now and our next meeting that we have, that, that we get a, a final record plan that describes everything as it's to be, not as it is anticipated or is. Because there's a number of discrepancies. The landscaping is not complete in this package. A lot of the landscaping and a lot of landscape islands that had been previously approved are gone. There, I appreciate the fact that there is a new site circulation that needs to be reviewed. I'm not, I'm, I'll be looking for some additional information in, in terms of testimony about how it's going to work. We're going to need some, some signage. And I request that we keep the, the striping of areas that are not for parking to a minimum. There's a number of places here where we could install some landscaping for the purposes of improving the aesthetics, especially right along Granite Street, as well as improving, reducing heat and also for stormwater purposes. And none of that has been addressed. So I believe there's still some work to be done in that area.
Excuse me.
Madam Planner, I believe one of the sheets, the drawing actually does show some rather extensive information about intended plantings. It would be the backside of the second page in this particular package.
I do see that, but however, there is quite a bit that has not been included. And quite a bit in terms of the parking area that could be, could be improved.
When we say could be, is that based on any particular driver other than requirements and regulations?
No.
Or feelings?
Based on requirements and regulations, yes. Based on requirements and regulations, yes.
I have a couple of other questions.
Before we get to yours, can we just get some clarification on exactly what you're telling us is missing from these plans as with respect to landscaping? We know the landscaping hasn't been done, but we have complete, I was under the impression we have complete landscaping plans. So what sheet is it, Joe?
Yeah, we provided an updated landscaping plan, LS1. It's a five-plan, excuse me, subset we provided. The last two sheets is the landscaping plan and then the details associated. On the plan, it distinguishes between phase one and phase two landscaping, showing shrubs and trees along Granite Street within the curbed islands of the entrance in and out and within the open sand filter grass area that we just spoke of.
There's a lot more opportunity for more trees along Granite Street. There, there's a whole area closer to the sediment four bay that could, has a couple more trees as well as a more closer to building one. Building two, I know is now going to be retail, but there, and I don't expect there to be any trees around the rear of that building. I'm just concerned about the two spaces that are Xed out. I believe they're going to be closing the garage doors on that building. So I guess that the question is whether or not those would be made available for parking. And the entire, the south portion of the property has absolutely, well, has very little landscaping included in it. And I think since there isn't going to be, there is a fence along there. I think in some cases there could be some additional trees for the purpose of kind of breaking up all of that asphalt that we see. Just my...
I'd like to comment a little further on landscaping too, on specific things. If you, if you leave here tonight, you look at right across the street in the park, right on the corner, there's two ginkgo trees, which is what you're proposing there. Look at them. They're 30 feet wide. You propose them right on the sidewalk. They're, they're feet away from Greenwich. They're 30 feet wide. I mean, it's just, it's not really a great choice of a tree for that location. The whole landscape plan for phase one is minimalist. Phase two is an arboretum. It's beautiful, right? All different kinds of varieties, nicer stuff. What is the timeframe for phase two? Is that, is that going to be, you know, somewhere down the road? Or is that, because it's night and day looking at the landscaping for phase two or phase one. Plus, all along Granite Street, that's an inhospitable location. You're right on the street, bacon right there on the sidewalk, some of the things you have there. I guarantee in a couple of years, it's not going to look the same as it did when you... It's just the varieties, I don't, so. And you cut down quite a bit on the, on the whole, there's a lot more impervious surface now than there was on, especially around building two. You had all, you had a large green space on the, and you cut all that out. Even on building one, there's a lot less. So it's, the amount of impervious surface, you said it increased, you know, it increased substantially.
It did, it shows an increase, but it's consistent with, the square footage is consistent with what was previously approved.
And Nancy's right, the landscaping on the first plan was more extensive. You had more islands.
We showed, if I could, we showed in the first plan, we showed landscaping along the frontage as we do today. Mind you, there's a gap of the building one area, which we can look at. We can plant in front of the sidewalk if that please, if that is to be considered. The orientation of the doors with the old plan is different.
You can have a little, a little grass along in between, I don't understand, in between some of the shrubs, you're going to have little pieces of grass right on, right on the sidewalk. I mean, it's going to be very, very difficult to maintain that.
I mean, there is a two-year maintenance requirement that the applicant is required to uphold and fix as years go on.
I read some of the, some of the maintenance plan. I think some of the varieties have to be looked at.
We can look at the varieties and we can look at swapping out the ginkgo tree as you recommended.
Look at them. Poof is right, it's right there. Those are set back too, maybe 10, 12 feet, and they're still out on. To put them right there on the sidewalk, those are the only two trees also, it's two trees, that's it. In the back, there's a lot of trees. There's a whole selection of them. In the front, the whole project, two trees.
With regards to the plantings, I can see why on the Tower Street side that there's more investment and investiture in the plantings as that's the beginning of a neighborhood right there as opposed to on the Granite Street side. At that point, you have other businesses and whatnot. The observation that there should be more plantings on the Granite Street side, this is going to run down the same set of rails that we're encountering with Main Street. People are saying more plantings, do this, do that, or whatever. Put yourself in the driver's seat. The more plants you have, whether you're coming out of that parking lot or coming into the parking lot, sooner or later, there could be some, could be some obstruction issues while people are trying to go in and out of potentially narrower spaces. So maybe other planting ideas, but not necessarily shrubs and trees with all the other appurtenances that are going to be outside.
They don't have to be on the street either.
Right.
They could be, there's a whole area.
Agreed. And then also too, I think your observation about the trees, either change of species or backing them in a little bit because at that point, your clearance height for trucks or whatever right there on Route 113-6, as soon as they start to spread, there's going to be, going to be all kinds of other issues and lots of people, drivers and people that maintain the property will be unhappy. So a couple of questions quickly. When we look at the collection, capture and the concentration of discharge for the water on the parking lot going into the drainage structures and then into planned or existing drainage piping, right now, yes, it does sheet clear the parking lots and not all of it goes down necessarily one street or another. Now we're taking all of that, bringing it all into one place and that concentrated discharge. And anyone who's been down on Main Street when we have a good soaking spring rain, at that point, we see it above the street. I'm just wondering if there could be, has anyone looked at the potential for impact on the existing drainage system down on Main Street as all this is coming down now through one sluice? You did a really great job, I think, with the planting schedules and also too, the schedule with all the drainage structures. But especially now where we have a little bit of an operative change on ingress from Tower Street, what I would like to see is a schedule where we're talking about strictly traffic flow control. So signs, devices, so forth and so on. I think that would be a very, very helpful addition. Thank you.
I have a question on the entrances and exits. I think it's just this one entrance and exit which are separate. And then over here would be just an entrance from the Tower Street side? That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
And does anybody know how wide is the entrance at Starbucks? That the entrance on the side street of Starbucks? Do you know how wide that is by any chance?
It's much less than 24 feet.
We believe it's 24.
So that's basically, I think, I think it's, I think it's more like 18. So that's the purpose, the 19 feet is just not enough for a two-way. Now, without that two-way, the only other way you get onto the property or off of the property is at the top. Is that a two-way exit and entrance to where your cursor is?
Yes, let me take a moment to explain the entrances. There's a full access exit, entrance, exit, just we'll say almost across from School Street. And then there is a right turn. As you travel north on Granite Street, there's a right turn entrance and a right turnout exit that will bring you to the light. And what we're proposing based on coordination DOT is a entrance only on Tower Street. We believe that's a better avenue than an exit only. So an entrance only will allow cars to kind of circulate through the area. So entering into the site, coming in, parking at the businesses. If they, if cars needed to exit, they could go to the light, right turnout. Or sometimes when they come down to the south, entrance, exit and exit left out of there. And there is an option where there's a connection to the plaza, but I believe the applicant isn't proposing or going to operate that at this time. Now, that is a full access entrance, exit as well. So the main, the main entrances or the two off of Granite Street and which also have two exits as well. And there'll be a third entrance only off of Tower.
Thank you.
I think that, sorry, John, you want to... I think the challenge for me, again, just common sense, there's less traffic on Tower Street. So for the businesses, yes, you know, it makes sense that we want to have the entrance on Granite Street. I get that. But now with the addition of residential, I mean, it makes sense to me, just, I haven't seen a traffic study, but it makes sense to me to go with what you guys had initially proposed there and have the entrance and the exit on Tower Street, especially now that, you know, it'd be a lot easier for the residents and it'd be easier on traffic too. It's just common sense.
Mr. Chairman, may I overstep my bounds slightly in the interest of, I'll let you overstep yours first.
This relates, I have a comment related to the same thing of getting on and off.
Okay, then I'll address, because that's what I want to address. Go ahead.
Want to talk at the same time? Maybe that will...
Yeah, it'll be helpful.
So when we talked about Route 1 corridor study, we talked about sharing of parking and transit and cutting down on the curb starts on Route 1, okay? This property adjoints Granite Shopping Plaza. Is there any possibility that we utilize the curb cuts that are there to enter into this property at that end and utilize the Tower Street? And now you've eliminated these curb cuts coming in and out directly in front of it. Now, we may or may not want to do that. I don't know. And I don't know how the restaurant folks would feel, but I throw it out there for your comment.
So as, as you know, we're eliminating one curb cut, which makes absolutely no sense on Granite Street, the one closest to the intersection. We're eliminating that one. So we'll have the two on Granite Street. At the risk of going out on a limb, if I suggest that we go back to the original Tower Street plan, which DOT also said is acceptable, and make that 24 feet wide and two-way traffic with appropriate signage. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is that would go a long way to address a concern that I'm hearing from the board. The other suggestion that I would make, maybe out on a further limb, is that we address the specific landscaping questions, issues, one-on-one with the town planner. We can sit down with our landscape, with our landscape person. We can have the town planner and the current chair, the acting chair, the secretary of the board, and figure out exactly what to do there. I just don't want that to be an impediment to holding up an approval from this board. Because we are, we've been through the mill on this. And I think that, you know, we're, we hear you. The landscaping is, it's a tough site, as you pointed out, Andy and Nancy, as you did. Is there room for more? Certainly, and potentially different variety, but there's not room for a lot more. You have considerations, I understand, for parking and the building two changed. They probably really want more parking now, more deliveries, and I understand. I also think it's nice to have tenants waiting to go in, which is a good thing.
Right.
Been a long time not to have that be vacant, so.
Signed leases, ready to go.
And I think the, this is not legal opinion or legal advice to my clients or anything else, but as a resident, it was getting awfully tired driving by that site in the state that it had been in for a very long time while we were in the process of getting approvals and permissions and moving it along. Well, I think it certainly looks a lot better than it ever has. I also like the idea of mixed use, which is something we've been bringing up now with the Route 1 corridor, different mixed use properties, making use of the existing parking for mixed use. It's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, I, before, before we move on, okay, I was wondering, because I may have missed it. I know there was some discussion about the buildings themselves and the rebuild out of the buildings. Is the board fine with that at this point? Are there any questions or concerns about that?
It's my understanding the footprints were staying the same.
Yes.
Not going to change, so I have no, I have no questions.
The use is changing and we now know what the buildings are going to look like there because they're up. So with one exception, the building two is going to have some changes. They're going to be removing a couple of garage doors and closing them in because they're going to be using it for retail. So if there is no question or concern about that, I'll just write that off as being fine for those changes.
Any board members have any questions about the buildings?
Okay, good.
John will have questions about everything, so.
Well, because John reads his material, that's why. He's baiting a butt. I get it. Building two, is there another tenant going in there? Is there a new business going in there? Is it, because before it was a parts store.
There's one tenant going in building two, auto parts.
Okay. I'm sorry, the building, the big, the large building?
Yeah, that one.
Right.
No, you're talking about the building on the corner?
No.
The middle building, the...
Middle one.
One tenant, O'Reilly Auto Parts.
It is O'Reilly Auto Parts. Okay, good. All right, thanks. I'm going to go on with my other questions. So according to town ordinance, we need 57 parking spots in the first phase. You are providing 75 parking spots. And as a result of that, we're losing curb appeal, I believe, on this site. And we're losing... um, green space on that site. So, north of Building Two, the north side of Building Two, on the original, on the original plans, a call for plantings and that, and I, I listened and I agree with Andy's pre discussion. I trust anyone comes to trees. But, um, if, if that was a green space, that might allow us to put some trees in there and increase the curb appeal as you look at this, as you look at the site. So as it currently is, and when I drive by it now, it does look a hundred percent better than it did before when it was abandoned and buildings were potentially falling down. But, um, all that blacktop doesn't it, it, it definitely does not add to the, the, the curb appeal of that area. And when I looked at the original plans and I saw the areas that you were going to have plantings previously, I liked this plan. Uh, I'm not crazy that tho- those all went away. Um, and and I look at the ordinance and it says you need fifty seven parking spots and you're providing seventy five. It's like one of the biggest things in our ordinance right now is we have parking lots on, on commercial areas, highway commercial that are larger than they need to be. If you go to Walmart, I defy you to find Walmart full even on Christmas Eve. Okay, or, or the day before Christmas Eve, all right? It's not gonna, it's not gonna be there. You'll see some in that lower lot, but that's it. Most of the people don't want their cars dinged. But when you look at some of the other lots in town, there's a large, so our ordinance already is rich when it comes to parking spots. It's already rich when it comes to parking spots. This, to go beyond that is, and to lose this green space, I'm inclined not to approve losing the green space and exceeding that far above the, uh, uh, the ordinance. So, um, and, and, and that's just, and that's just phase one. In phase two, you're looking at an additional forty one parking spots. So we'd look at a hundred and sixteen parking spots on this whole property if you did phase one and phase two, according to the, the thing that's in front of us. And again, I, I look at the original and, um, uh, it's much more pleasing. Uh, it's much more, um, you know, there's more vegetation up in there, it, it is. You know, you've got trees, you've got an area, it, it looks unless you run into the need, you would, you would, you'd, uh, not even build that. And then the question is, is how much would you utilize it if you needed it? So I, I'm inclined not to, you know, uh, there's two things that I'm concerned about. One, affordable housing. Okay? Two, so what we come to, we're adding apartments, which I think is great and all that, but I'm concerned about affordable housing. But I know it's not a comprehensive permit, and I know I can't compel you to do it, but it sure would be help, okay? Uh, but number two, um, this loss of green space, and I think there's ways that you can restore that and still be okay, because again, our ordinances are rich when it comes to parking spots.
I have a question that kind of goes along with that. From my commercial driver's point of view, logistics, logistical flows, one, they're already a little compacted by having only two entrances and exits. Three, if you're anywhere in any kind of business time during the day and a truck from Cisco or whoever else comes in, auto parts store, it's not a small van at that point. If we start putting little planting islands and whatever back into the plan, that is going to be a nightmare. And I can see at this point that it, it could be a challenge that will present damage possibly to the plantings, certainly possibly damage to vehicles as someone tries to worm a heavier vehicle through that parking lot. And, uh, try to do the right thing, but, um, if we're going to add those things back in, then we might need to look at other places other than where they may have been before.
And other places on the property would be, would be acceptable, too.
If, if, if I may, um,
I, I see now where you put in a restaurant and there's going to be three apartments, you're going to need more, you're going to need more parking up, up towards building. I see that. So, so those added to four, six, seven spots along on the, that side of Building Two, I see are necessary now, whereas before there was, but John's right, if you have that many more, there's probably some down the other end. I don't know, that, that might not be as necessary.
The south side of Building Three.
Be a long way to go. It's going to be a long way to walk. It's a golf cart place, saying you don't need a lot of parking there. So obviously, someone's, that's living in the apartment, it's not going to park way down there, the, the the Granite Street shopping, you know, end of the parking lot. Or, or even the south side of Building Two. So instead of being on the north side, move it to the south side. Well, employees and stuff are going to be, uh, using there. Or even customers, I don't know. It's clearly, clearly you got a lot of parking down
Yeah, it's, it's, the powers we have, we're, most of the businesses are toward the north and a lot of the parking is south.
See that.
And the circulation and really the seven spaces that, uh, John, you mentioned now, the seven spaces, kind of designate that for the residential factor.
I can see that.
Proximity to the apartments, that's where that comes from. Um, you know, maybe that island can, uh, the striped island could be, uh, a landscape island instead. I mean, I, we see your point. We can work out some of those items. The truck circulation, once we found out that O'Reilly's Auto Parts was coming, we repositioned those spaces to be along the fence to get them outside of the middle so that a truck could get in there and maneuver. Um, again, to the point that having landscape islands would break up that and just get destroyed. So.
I, I have a question. Um, uh, maybe our, um, an observation that, uh, if you're going to, uh, redo the pavement leading out to, um, Tower Street to, to meet the twenty four foot width, you're going to have to move the fence. We already talked about the manhole as well. Um, it looks like, um, I'm not sure if this is for certain because it's under a couple of layers that, that there may be, um, a, uh, uh, garbage station or something like that, dumpster inside of that phase two line. My thought is move the phase two line allowing for some more, uh, to the, uh, east. Allowing for um, for that dumpster to be there, allowing for maybe six parking spaces and, uh, maybe, uh, fence it off a little bit and dedicate that to the residential use. So they have an area that's apart from the prime, the, um, commercial use, a place to park. And then you would gain at least six spaces over there. You only need three, but I give them some room, you know? Six spaces, um, and you can move that face two fence back. Okay, that opens things up a little bit. I know you're probably going to have to do some grading and, and, and work over there in order to get that accomplished. Um, but it also kind of frees up that area a bit. Um, maybe right in front of the building. And because you have the parking along the north side of Building Two. So now everything can kind of kind of shuffle down a little bit. Um.
Conversely, I mean, the white, so by winding the twenty four foot, as we're proposing,
Yep.
We're moving the fence. I mean, where my cursor is, the white space.
Yeah.
You know, putting trees there. Putting some, putting some, without expanding or adding more pavement is what I'm trying to.
Well, I think, I think you're going to need a twenty four foot wide lane there, not just the curb cut.
Oh, it, it is. Um, it's twenty four feet at the curb cut. There's a dimension of twenty nine feet as exists, um,
Oh, okay.
Today.
Yeah.
And then it just reduces down from that width to twenty four within the site.
Okay.
It's only, it's only at the curb line, once you get into the right way, that it's the narrow nineteen or.
We see, I see what I mean about uh, about opening that up, maybe those, uh, first, uh, six parking spaces, three on each side. Um, for the residential use. Kind of moving, moving the face two back a little bit. That was, that was just, that was the thought I was trying to express. So.
If we go ahead and do that, there's also a couple of phase two drainage structures that are there. So at that point, would you be providing them relief and not having to install those right away when you add in the blacktop with the six spots?
Uh, yeah, you're right. You're right, that, that drainage structure would then come into play likely.
What, so what the question was, was if they're going to try to relieve the situation by adding some parking spots.
There.
Are you going to be then requiring them to install those drainage structures, or are you going to provide them a little bit of relief since they're trying to help out with the situation?
Um,
I mean, it's not like it's the whole phase two parking area.
Right.
It's just three spots on each side.
Right.
But I think the question needs to be.
I think we could, we could measure how much additional.
Is there a way to achieve the same purpose with somewhere else on the property or, um, without?
No, no, not for the residential. I mean, you, they want them in that area, right?
Or is that a means and methods control for the developer and the contractor to work out whether they're going to have temporary structures, waddles, or whatever else in place to take care of sediment migration and erosion control?
If there's an increase in, in, um, impervious surface in that location, yeah, it is, the stormwater is going to have to be handled, but uh, can, can, can it not be, be handled, um, and for phase one under you know, the current, just directed into the, uh, in the direction of the sediment forbath? You, you'll have to tell me. Don't know enough about that. But I, I'm not trying to complicate things. I was hoping to find a, a better solution to the parking situation.
No, I understand.
And getting things closer to the upper side, that, that's what brought it up.
My, my thoughts, just talking out loud, would be would be looking to keep the parking along the north side. Take these existing striped islands and making them landscaped. Because they won't be impeded by truck traffic. Adding, possibly adding, um, you know, maneuvering the fence around the dumpster and adding vegetation on either side of that. In the hopes of not trying to add more impervious to the site.
Or is the, the dedicated resident parking going to be then there?
Yeah, yes.
That, okay.
Because it's, it's close proximity with the entrance, being on the eastern side of the building.
Okay.
That's what I could come up on the fly. I don't know if you guys have any other ideas.
Well, let's, let's, let's take a look at that. We'll see how that will.
People are going to want to park as close as they can to everything.
True.
Why, another thing, go and, if you have entrance only, we all know un- unless you have a gate there or something, doesn't matter if it's entrance only, people are still gonna, still gonna leave there. It's like, um, not that I do it, I've never done it myself. But coming out of like Honeydew and Dunn's Corners, you know, you can't go right through, cut through the credit union. I mean.
Over my years.
Can't, and I've never done it, but I've seen other people do it. One, one, one more thing on stormwater. So your sand filter, I'm looking, I'm reading right now, April third, your memo to Kyle Gagnon, uh, Mr. Duramel.
Yes.
And, uh, drainage sand filter A.
Yes.
So, maintain post-development ten year storm event mitigation. So everything is designed for ten year storm?
That's DOT's requirement, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so this corner of the, of where you're going to have all that, you know, um, sand, that's where the sand filters are going to be located?
Yes.
Right, okay, so in there, that will be able to hold the water for ten years a, at a minimum, or are you saying this is a minimum, or is it going to hold?
Over, over the ten year flow, it would, it would discharge into the.
To the town.
To the town, I'm sorry, the state system.
So what's, what's the amount of rainfall for a ten year storm event?
Um,
They have that?
Five and a half inches, um.
Five and a half inches in what period?
Twenty hour, hour period of time. It's, 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 um, not as frequent of a storm event. So like the, the, the more nuisance storms, the system would operate and, you know, mitigate any water towards it.
We just keep getting more and worse storms. Couldn't this site handle, could, could you design it? Could you add capacity to this? So that exceeds that?
Um.
Or are you running into limitations in the ground?
Limitations that we have is, is, um, as you can see in the area that we have is I kind of have two, two areas where it's, it's, it's bisected by existing utilities. So I'm limited by the, the now existing infrastructure. So, um.
And if you go down there with a pickaxe and dig too deep, what do we have?
Ledge.
Right. Okay.
It was the quarry.
Thank you.
Got it, granted.
Okay, any other, uh, any other comments?
Just to, uh, returning to John's earlier point, i- in order, so that we're not, you know, too much of a break on the wheel of progress here. I think the nineteen feet is, is a, a, a little bit of a, you know, a sticking point and landscaping. And John brought up, um, LMI, which is, we'd all like to see, but I guess we can't require that here, right? Um, so those are kind of the, the, the big things, I, 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 I think, on my, on my end, anyway.
Okay, Nance, uh, do we just continue it to, uh, make a, do we need a motion for a continuance or so automatically continue?
Yes, uh, you may, oh, first of all, ask if there's anybody here who wants to speak because this is a public hearing.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this project? Please head to the podium. State your name. And your address.
Hi there. Uh, Edward Carr, twelve Tower Street. So, in the, um, this is the second letter we got to come here to see the planning. We came to the first one and it was going to be a parking lot put in behind the water tower. Um, it was going to be, uh, upper level. No, parking around the, uh.
Uh, you mean, hang on, behind the water tower?
Well, uh, be- between the water tower and, uh, Granite Street.
Okay, got it.
Not behind the wa- but if you are on this property, um, so there, there hasn't been a parking lot established, and we were curious if there was. Our concerns is with lighting. How they're going to illuminate the parking lot. So, you know, I, I lights coming in through, uh, the windows of our house, you know, pointing at us or, um, so it's, it's been five or six years maybe since that meeting, the first one when we were invited. Um, but this is the first time, you know, I've seen different changes occur in the project, and I'm, my concern is with, you know, my house lighting, um, you know, is there going to be a parking lot still going in right across the street from us, or is that just going to stay afield as it is now?
So phase two, uh, I guess we can have the applicant answer that question.
Yes, that's, you're talking about phase two, which is not even subject of this hearing. There's nothing being.
Well, we got the letter for this. Um, it's only our second letter that we received. I didn't know there was multiple phases.
That's phase two, and we're not proposing anything for phase two right now.
Okay.
We've cleaned up the site and we'll be working on something, and obviously, as an abutting property owner or an owner within two hundred feet, you'll get notice of every hearing.
Okay, well, this was just the second notice we've ever received since the beginning, um, so we just wanted to come in and address this, you know, we've kind of just been curious what's been happening because, you know, it's right across the street from us and we didn't see a parking lot develop there, uh, with everything going on. And so we were curious about that and kind of the lighting that they talked about, uh, initially, it was going to be, uh, is it a, a low, low, low level light? So I, I forget the exact terminology. So I, I forget the exact terminology that was used, um, you know, is this gonna be highly, you know, cause getting into the residential neighborhood, um.
You should be addressing the board.
Oh, I, I'm.
Right.
I'm not sure who I'm talking to, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, so I just kind of wasn't sure uh what the plans are.
Sir, sir, your question concerning lighting?
Yes.
The board typically requires dark sky lighting, which is all designed to be downward facing um and not create, not add to air pollution, uh, light pollution.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was gonna be any spotlights on the building, cause you know, it's kind of, if you look at the property now, especially around the Tower Street area where the new building is, um, there's not a lot of room there to put up pole lighting.
Haven't seen anything yet with phase two, so we don't know.
So that's.
Well, 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 I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public wish to uh address the board? Then we have a continuance.
Motion to continue the public hearing to a certain date, so I would suggest the, the next regular meeting is May 20th. Um, we will definitely have a full group by then, uh, so that would be my recommendation, especially since it, we have some work that we need, need to do on uh the plans. Uh, and what I'd like to do is I'd have, like to have a, a complete uh final record plan uh ready for approval at that point, um, so that, you know, we make sure that has all the right things on it, because right now there's things on different sheets that say different things.
If I might address this whole concept of yet another continuance, first of all, I'd like to address Mr. Carr's question about lighting. There's gonna be no freestanding pole lighting on the site. It's all low level, the lighting will be mounted on the buildings and directed downward, and it's mostly for security and obviously to light the buildings. With respect to the concept of yet another continuance, um, we've addressed, I think, quite thoroughly, the conditions, the concerns. Granted, we do not have a record plan in front of you tonight, which is suitable for recording, but we weren't prepared to, we weren't ready to prepare one of those until tonight's discussion. Perfect example, the 19-foot access becoming a 24-foot wide entrance and uh exit, which we will agree to, again, to move this along. With respect to the landscaping, I think there's been good discussion with suggestions from the applicant's representative as to where we could put some additional landscaping, some additional green space, recognizing that the applicant is very reluctant to do any additional planting, but if it gets this to a yes with conditions, I'm sitting here tonight prepared to agree to it. The um concept of a continuance to May 20th, based upon everything that we've done, everything that we've gone through, and the fact that DOT jumped through hoops to respond to the town and us in a matter of three days with, after a site meeting with significant issues to address, I think is just not appropriate in these, under these circumstances. We have, there's no secret, we have tenants ready, um, and I know that's not a concern of the planning board, it's not an appropriate discussion to have before the planning board, but you should be aware of it. And the the progress that's been made, granted, more could have been made, but the progress that's been made and the urgency in getting all the professionals, including the town staff, to drop what they were doing to meet and come to a conclusion with the town manager involved and the towns, town staff favoring the project and favoring moving it along. I would just like to see the board consider an approval this evening with some conditions and direct the town planner to provide you with a written decision on which you can vote at your May 6th special meeting if it takes another meeting. I understand that it should be a written decision and obviously it's not fair to expect a written decision tonight, but as you've done in the past, you're able to make a favorable consensus, a favorable uh vote tonight as part of it, include some conditions as we've discussed and direct the planner to provide a written decision for your May 6th meeting.
Um, phase two, inasmuch as, you know, we detail the, are we willing to take phase two out of this? In other words, right now, we're being asked in final to approve this, and the drawing I'm looking at here looks a whole lot better um than this. In other words, I may have asked to approve 116 parking spots effectively tonight, and I know you're telling, gonna tell me in about two minutes, you're gonna tell me, well, phase two is down the road, we don't know if we'll do it, et cetera, et cetera, and, and I agree with all of that, so therefore why is phase two on here and are you willing to remove it? Cause that'll help me move toward.
Phase, can I re, respond, Mr. Chairman? The outline of parking spaces on phase two shouldn't be there, because we don't even, we have no idea what the use for phase two is going to be. So it may require three parking spaces, it may require 53. We don't know. If it gives you a comfort level to approve a plan without those parking spaces lined up in there, we'll do that in a minute.
Well, if that, what I'm suggesting is that nothing occur up there unless you're coming back and putting another, you know, with regard to, you know, you might come back and say, I want to put housing up there, because we get mixed use and it's all the one piece of property, we can do that. And so the entire, so to say in the future, you know, I'm looking at your plan previously and it said, it says need not be built parking area and associated improvements, and I, and I'm kind of wonder, and the planner and maybe the solicitor can help me here, if, if, maybe the planner can help me here, if, if in the future, they've done, you know, there's a need, in other words, we see as a town that this thing is overflowing and parking is a problem there, is there any way that we can handle, you could handle possibly some of that administratively if it's small enough? And it doesn't need to come before the board.
Yes, that, that is possible.
Okay, so my question goes back to you, are you willing to remove phase two from this for, for us tonight?
Just explain to me what you mean by removal.
You, I mean that there will, nothing will occur in phase two as, as outlined in the plan before us tonight, that you submitted. Now, if you wanted me to approve phase two as you had it originally, way back when, you'd have my vote, but not with that. So my, my thing is, is you've got more than, you've got 75 parking spots, 75 parking spots.
Excluding the phase two, and those, those should not have been shown.
And you got 41 more up there. And according to your drawings, according to this document right here in front of me. So my point is, is why, you know, if you want, otherwise we just continue it and go on.
Let me try to clarify, let me try to clarify my understanding. So obviously, we show the property because it's part of the site, it's owned, owned by the applicant. We remove those lines indicating parking spaces on that, on phase two. We remove the word phase two? Or do you care if that stays?
No, you could say phase two, future.
Because, and whatever, whatever we do, if anything, in phase two, has to come to this board.
Or, or, or as you just heard from the planner, if it, if you just need to make some tweaks on the property and that, and it's small enough, it might, may even be fall under administrative.
Or that, yeah.
Yeah, so, so phase, the, the whole. So.
If I could just clarify, Mr. Chairman?
We want, you've got people that are ready and willing to move in there, I think it's all great, we want to move toward that thing, but there's too many unanswered questions. Right now, that's not paved, correct?
No.
Okay, so it's gonna be left in the natural state and, right?
We can remove that designation, we can remove those lines that would indi, would seem to indicate parking spaces. We'll do that. And include that depiction on the record plan.
Well, I would just like to point, point out.
It's gotta be recorded.
Phase two is already been previously approved as it was indicated in 2023.
And that's good.
Okay, so you don't want to see any changes from
That.
that to this, so if you, phase two could be represented the same exact way it was in 2023, then we can proceed.
When we received preliminary plan approval.
Approval last time, yeah. Okay, and there will be conditions of approval that says phase two is, when, when final plan is, is approved, it will be for phase one only, and they would have the, have the opportunity to come back and once again, they could amend their preliminary plan
Sure.
to change what they want to do in phase two. Or they can come and requ, and apply for final plan approval for phase two. Okay?
That was my intent, thank you.
So whatever that is.
A, a separate final plan approval for phase two, should we decide to do something other than what's been approved at preliminary in 2023?
Because man, there's, there's state permitting tied to those, to the area as well.
Okay, let's get back to phase one. Great, where do we stand as far as the board's concerned, as far as Mr. Nardone's uh suggestion of moving it forward with conditions? How does the board feel about that?
I, I, I personally, like I said, I don't, you know, don't want to be the break on the wheel of progress here, I want to, the site looks great, you've done a great job, I want to see it continue, you know, don't want to slow things down, as we continue to add conditions here, it starts to, and, and again, on things that had previously been approved that have not, you know, have been changed, it's gotta be you know, bit of give and take and, and I agree with John, I like what I saw from the, the pre-plan approval in 2023. Um, I, I'd be okay as long as um others are with conditionally approving um um what you guys have put before us, as long as we, you know, go back to 2023 on phase two, we change that 19 back to 24 and uh work with the town planner to um, you know, increase the, the, the green spaces here. That's my opinion.
Given some of the things that we've been talking about, council has indicated that they would be happy to take care of or whatever, we're really looking at putting things back in that were part of the original plan before, so at that point, the entrance from Tower Street goes from 19 to 24. We reincorporate some of the plantings that were through the parking lot area proper, maybe more towards the edges as opposed to in the middle to accommodate traffic, who knows? Uh, but other than that, um, I am relatively unconflicted with what we've talked about here.
I also would agree to the conditional um approval as James talked about, I, I also think the site looks great, I love the um addition of the apartments up top, I think that's um really a, a good um change, um, and I think the landscaping definitely could use uh some more, some more green um in that area, you haven't done it yet, so when you drive by there, it does look really a lot of pavement, I, you haven't put any of it up, but so it's hard to, to know, but I, I always think that um that could be um helpful to have more green on Granite Street, which we all, you know, drive every day, so I'm, I'm fine with the conditional approval as well.
Okay, um, again, I thank you for the phase two, clarified, you know, we're back to the original preliminary on that, um, and, and to come back for that, um, I think that's good. And again, that green space or, or, which would result in a slight reduction in, in parking spots, that's gonna be critical um to, to this project and Madam Planner trusts that you will make this look as pleasing curb wise as we can, working with, you know, the engineer and uh, and on the site, because it is a challenging site. So with that, I am ready to make a motion if you need it.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion, Nancy has something to add?
I'm, I'm, I'm not against uh doing, you doing a conditional approval tonight, subject to a decision uh being made at a later date, I would just caution that uh without a plan set that um we, we are hun, that we feel is 100% accurate to what you want to approve, it is going to be difficult for us to identify, it's difficult for me on your behalf to identify conditions of approval. So we're going to have to work very hard to uh put together a plan set that covers everything, um, and that's gonna take a little time, um, so, and I can't guarantee it before May, May the 6th, that's all I can say.
So if I understand correctly, you're looking for tangible deliverables in four weeks?
It actually has to be less than four weeks.
Get our act together on our end in time.
No, 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 you, you, I'm talk, this, after this evening, I'm assuming that this is going to fall on me and Mr. Dupree and others to put this package together to bring back to you uh for a decision, with a written decision in hand. I'm fine with doing that, I'm just telling you, I don't think I can do that between now and May the 6th. Um, I'm very sorry, but I don't think that, that that's going, going to be possible, um, because there is still so much that still needs to be discussed and information that needs to be distilled, um, so.
So then after, after May 6th, the next is May 20th?
What?
When's the earliest you could?
I, I know I'm pushing the envelope and I.
When's the earliest you could get it to them?
Excuse me?
When, when's the earliest you could get it to the town, the town planner?
It's really a matter of sitting down and.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest is.
And, and discussing.
Setting up a meeting to discuss.
We can meet next week to discuss all of this and um, and, and to make sure that we have a, the, the right checklist of things that need to be incorporated, but next week is also the week that I'll be, by Thursday, having to send stuff to the board for their uh May meeting. Um, so it's like, it's, it's a little close.
She is.
Right?
You have a full-time?
Calendar correct?
You have a full-time job already, yes.
Yes.
And in the, and in the middle of it, once we come away from all these other meetings, discussions or whatever as to who's gonna be doing it, then they have to go back and revise their drawings and everything else they have to resubmit.
And resubmit at least five days before the next meeting, right?
The, the record plan that um. The, the record plan that, um, that's showing all the final version of the improvements that we're, we're, we've been talking about, right? Um, could it be a matter of the, like the survey component of it after or? I guess go expand on the record plan factor. Cause the way I thought it was the as-built, once everything is completed. Can you please use your microphone?
There, there's certain changes that need to be made to Sheet Six with regard to the stormwater, at least for the roof, the roof leaders and where that is going to be for Building Three. Excuse me. Um, when we start discussing, um, the landscaping, um, we're going to be moving, probably moving, moving some of the, um, parking spaces around, uh, and then you have the, the, the area over by Tower Street that needs to be, um, addressed. Um, there is, there's some equipment that was, uh, put into place by, uh, behind, uh, Building One along Tower Street that's not on any plan. Um, that probably should be included. Um, if there's any other outdoor equipment that's been stationed. There's. No, 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 not Phase Two, Building One. The existing building. There's some meters and there's some other, um, I think underground, uh, utility that's, that's buried over there. That's not indicated on the plan.
Those are the existing services for Building One.
It, the existing services, yeah.
They were maintained for that.
Which, which needs to be documented. This is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Can you please speak into a microphone for the record?
Um, so there's some things we need to go over to make sure this, this, uh, planning set is complete. That, that's all. Um, I think we can get there. We can get there quickly. Um, I think we have to have a conversation, uh, early next week perhaps. And then, uh, maybe the week after, we can do that. Um, I was just looking at the calendar and I apologize. I was thinking, um, I think there's one more week than I thought there was in April, sure. So, um, it's may, it is, it is possible.
May sixth is possible.
May sixth is possible. There is a whole nother week in there that I wasn't aware of.
We will do, I'm committing Joe to do what he has to, to do what he has to do to make sure we make that.
Live in Sound Hall.
Okay, so if board is okay with ha- putting this on the special meeting?
Absolutely. I, I make a motion that we continue this matter to May sixth. Okay, um, with the conditions that we talked about today, which is, you know, to be worked out, but the, this is, um, for approval at, hopefully at the May sixth meeting for Phase One only. And for Phase Two, as was preliminarily approved back in 2023. Um, so that would remain the same. And, uh, additional green space. That's it. That's my motion.
One question clarifying, Mr. Chairman. That's, oh, well.
Second the motion?
I'll second that.
All right. My question is simply, is that it's continued to May sixth for a decision?
Correct.
Correct, absolutely.
But the public hearing remains open.
Yes, public hearing stays open, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really close.
With.
We're really close now.
With thanks to the, the town planner.
Foot in the door.
A little more work on Mr. Duhamel's part. But we didn't make all the changes. Keep that in mind. Can we take a five-minute break? Take a five-minute recess is in order. We reconvene at nine o'clock.
Well, I had a problem opening it again. I hope you don't. Okay, this is something, uh, one of the administrative procedures that we do every year. Um, there, the recommendations, um, from the, uh, from, from the grant administrator and, um, the regarding, um, and the applications for the Community Development Block Grant Program, years 2023 and 2024. There's two years because, uh, the 2023 kind of never got off the ground at the state. So there's, um, two application cycles going on at the same time. Um, I've, we've provided a summary, uh, of, of all the information relative to the CDBG program. The same information, um, was given to the town council. The town council had a meeting on this. Um, it is there, within their authority, uh, to determine, uh, the submission of this as, uh, from the town. Uh, the planning board's responsibility is to review the list and, and terms of the comprehensive plan and, uh, to find, make findings and recommendations to the town council um, on consistency with the comprehensive plan. So a lot of information here, some very interesting things. Um, but there's also a lot of references to the, the comprehensive plan and there is a proposed, uh, motion, uh, for you at this time.
I assume that all members have, uh, read the descriptions of the proposed projects and activities. Spending about eight million dollars. Most of it's going to couple of different road reconstruction projects. And, um, so we're just basically, as Nancy said, does this comply with the comprehensive plan? So there's a draft motion, uh, if there's any discussion. Any board members wish to discuss anything regarding the Community Development Block Grants? If not, we'll entertain a draft motion.
One point. Um, so most of, there's a lot in here having to do with infrastructure, drainage, improvements to the centers. But then there's the other aspect of the Community Block Grants, which is to help and partner with nonprofits. So all the work in here, you know, this is for the, for Warm, Johnny Cake Center. Um, also this investment in the, in the Tower Street Community Center, uh, with the work there, which will be home to Wesley Education Center, um, uh, Wood River Health as well as town programs. That'll be administered out of, that will be, uh, uh, run out of there. So, um, these all seem very, very worthy and, um, I'm, I'm very glad to make the motion that we approve, um, as presented the, uh, this year's, uh, Community Development Block Grant, um, of application. I saw no inconsistencies with the, um.
We just looking for a second motion.
Sorry, second.
Yeah, I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question regarding Wesley Education Center. So there's a provision in here that we are looking to, or they're asking us to fund one training cohort for, um, medical assistant training. So at that point, is it up to fifteen students? And the block grant goes in, and then at that point, if they enroll eight, what happens to the excess?
I, I, I think the up to fifteens, up to fifteen students all, all depends on whether or not they get additional funding. So they're, they're kind of putting together financing for the project.
So is that something that we're putting aside as a reserve and then they tell us how many students they have and we pay out accordingly? Or at that point, whatever they use, they use and the rest they hang on to?
They're considered, they're considered a subrecipient. Um, the money flows through a third party that we, that the town has, um, contracted with to manage the money as it comes from this, from the state and goes to the subcontractor. It doesn't, it doesn't touch the town's books.
Again, it's just, is it compliant with the comprehensive plan? That's basically the litmus test. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, in two, terms of the motion, I would recommend that the draft motion as written, um, on, oh, what page is that? Um, it, in the memo, um, be what is adopted.
I would, I would, do we need to read the draft motion or just?
No, you can incorporate the memo by reference. You can mark it as Board's Exhibit A. I think, what is it, a nine-page motion, a nine-page memo?
All right, then, and I amend my motion to include the April ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, memo from Nancy Lattendra and Dale Faulkner, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, thank you. I'm losing years here. Uh, and, um, I'm making reference to, uh, many of the motion to include the draft, uh, for draft motion, uh, on page nine of that, uh, of that memo.
Been easy just to read it.
I know, it would have been easy just to read it.
I second.
Do you have all that, Chloe? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted? Okay, um, Ministry of Office report, future agenda and monthly report matrix. I guess, um, Aiden's not here, so we can, you know. Yeah.
Bring it to you and, um, if there's, um, any questions, um.
Any significant changes from? I didn't notice any significant changes.
No, there hasn't been any significant changes in, in terms of the status of the projects. Yeah.
Adding, we'll just be adding that to May.
Yes, mhm.
Okay, and just like that, we got the solicitor, Assistant Solicitor for Planning and Zoning's report.
Again, you've heard enough from me. Nothing, nothing further.
But we like it.
Yeah, we did hear enough from you tonight, yeah. Hey, future agenda items and board questions. Not that the chairman's going to answer them, but I guess there's none. Confirmation of quorum for the next meeting.
Actually, I did have.
Next meeting's May sixth. It's gonna be a big one. Well, we got a working session with ARP on Rock.
I'll be here.
Anyone gonna be here? Uh, Harry, you gonna be here next? James, okay.
How about May twentieth?
May twentieth, Dan's gonna be here. May sixth, I hope so. Be funny if you don't make it.
I, I won't be here June third. I'll be out on medical leave, so we'll have someone in my place.
Someone in your stead?
Yeah, probably Aiden.
I, I do have, can I go back to one question for the, for the planner? And it has to do with the May twentieth meeting.
That's good in the order.
Yeah. So eight twenty, the EV storage, are you aware that, um, I was, I want to say it's Wilbraham, Wilbraham, Massachusetts, there was a bus garage with five school buses, EV school buses, a fire overnight and charging. I'll, I'll send you forward your, an article if you can include it in the packet for that meeting. That would be good. Thank you.
Okay.